Ready?
Ready.
Second.
Good evening. This is the September 5th meeting of the Planning Board. And I call this meeting to order. The next order of business is to review and approve minutes. We don't have any minutes to approve this evening. The next order of business is to review and sign bills. We do have some bills. Graves Engineering for 50 Centec Boulevard, eighty-one dollars and fifty cents. Bowman Engineering for 50 Centec Boulevard for traffic impact study site plan review, three thousand nine hundred seventy-eight dollars and sixteen cents. You have one for noise control engineering for 142 Clinton Street for a sound study review, two thousand six hundred dollars. And we have another from noise control engineering on 142 Clinton Street for a sound study review for five thousand four hundred dollars. For a total of twelve thousand fifty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents. So, any questions, comments? You have a motion there?
I am moving to authorize the expenditures as read by the Chair.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? If you have none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Board member comments? Does anybody have any comments?
I'm all set.
Thank you. Do we have a staff report, Mr. McGovern?
Not this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we're into our meetings and hearings. We have a, an application for a special permit for-
Mr. Chair, do you want to just mention with the zoning?
I was going to do this first, but sorry, yeah, we can do that. Okay. For those of you, well, for everybody. In the warrant articles that we were going to have a hearing on tonight, we are not going to be hearing the article on the MBTA zoning because it's not ready, so we'll bring it back when it is. Okay, so, that will not, we're not going to be discussing that at all. Okay. Okay, so, the first order of business, you might as well sit at this table, Jim. There's a special permit application for a proposed duplex by James Brown. It's a new public hearing. The location is 6971 Edgewater Ave. The decision deadline is ninety days from the close of the hearing. And Ms. Holstrom, can you read the advertisement?
Certainly. The Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, September 5th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Select Board's hearing room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Ave, to hear the application of James Brown, 6971 Edgewater Ave, Shrewsbury, Mass. 01545, for special permit and site plan approval by the Planning Board as required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 7 F 3 and Section 6 Table 1, to construct a duplex as shown on plans entitled, "Plan Showing Proposed House Prepared for Brown &amp; Brown Real Estate LLC, dated March 26, 2024, prepared by Jarvis Land Survey, Inc., 29 Grafton Circle, Shrewsbury, Mass. 01545, stamped by Kevin J. Jarvis, PLS." Consisting of one page, the subject property is located at 6971 Edgewater Ave, north of Lakewood Drive and south of Sterling Street, and consists in whole or in part of Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate, 39 Plot 087000. A copy of the application plans and reports may be seen in the office of the Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Ave, Shrewsbury, Mass., and on the Planning Board website.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Yes, good evening. Jim Brown with Brown &amp; Brown Real Estate. Thank you for having me this evening. We purchased this lot when this lot was prepared back in the early 1900s. It was pre-zoning for the town of Shrewsbury. It actually allows me to build a single-family home right up with no setbacks required. However, we do not feel that's the best use for the lot. As you can see, for the dwelling we've proposed, we have adequate setbacks, especially approaching Jordan Pond, which I think is nice. But really, there are several reasons why I don't feel like it's such a great idea to max out the lot with a really large, single-family home. We did thirty-eight duplex units on Nelson Point. What's nice about it is the price point for people to, you know, to purchase, rather than my homes up on High Street where, because of the lot costs, I'm restricted to build, you know, over a million and a half, where we're trying to get these to in the six hundreds for each side. I just think, I mean, I would love to build more affordable housing in Shrewsbury. I just, we just can't do it due to lot costs. But we have the opportunity here to do that. And if you've driven through Nelson Point, it's, you know, it was very well done, I believe. Very popular. They came out very nice. And we propose, if you look at the plan, we propose similar, you know, aesthetic details to it. We're doing the block architectural roof shingles. Our corner boards will not be like a typical vinyl corner board. We're doing PVC AZAC, which is a nicer look. We're going to do the main street siding, which is by certinteed, and it's a cedar impression siding. You actually can't tell from a little bit of a distance that it's vinyl. We're doing carriage-style doors, which we typically do in our other homes. And we're going to do a beige, probably with a, we're doing Anderson 200 Series windows, and probably in the black, black windows. So it will be, when all said and done, you know, it will be, you know, quite a nice dwelling. And I think it actually adds value to the neighborhood. So I'm actually, so that's out of the actual plan. I did do a study on the housing in the area, the types of housing. If you look at the breakdown of the housing in the Plainfield Ave neighborhood, you can obviously see, you know, a fair number of single families. But then when you get into the two-family, there's quite a large number of two-families already in the neighborhood. And then actually even more than, there's a three, a four, and then some multi-apartment buildings with seventy-two parcels total in the neighborhood. So it's not like I'm going to be one of, you know, coming into a single-family neighborhood with a duplex. It's actually a mixed neighborhood already. So I would appreciate some feedback and any questions that you have.
Okay. Questions from members of the board?
So would this be, excuse me, a two-family, two units?
Correct. Seventeen hundred and twenty square feet per side.
And how many bedrooms?
Three bedrooms. One oversized garage door.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Where's the entrance coming in from?
From Sterling.
Okay.
Yeah, you can see the little bump out. Those are the two garage.
Okay.
Garage protruded a little bit.
Yes, thank you. My apologies.
So the driveway is going just straight out?
Straight in from Sterling with actually off-street parking. It's actually a better, I hate drivers actually turn it the other way as well. This is actually a better layout for the, for the property. Just for a setback, you know, so people can park in the bad ways.
Anybody else have questions?
My, my comment would be, I would just ask that for those driveways, you just provide like an L, so people aren't backing out on Sterling.
Yeah, we typically do a-
I drive that road just about every day.
Yeah.
And that's kind of a, a lot of people, they come to a rolling stop, I would call it, at Sterling Street.
Right.
You know, it's kind of a, we're Edgewater, Plainfield, and it's not Lakewood. What is that? Is it Ridgeland? Where they all intersect, it's kind of confusing, so. I, I think that it would be better if people pulled out rather than backed up onto Sterling Street.
Yeah, we typically in all our houses, we do that. It's, it's just more desirable, I think. Rather if somebody exit the right direction.
I think I'd put that in as a condition of this-
Yeah, we have, we have no problem with that.
Okay.
Anyone else?
No.
Well, I guess more of a comment than a question, but the area on the left-hand side of Edgewater and Sterling, where you got that ten foot seven, twenty feet.
Yep.
You have a problem, we say, like, no plantings over two and a half feet?
No, for, for a site?
Yeah.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, what about, do you have to go to conservation?
I do. It's already been flagged. I'm on the list to go to conservation next time.
Anyone else? Mr. McGovern?
We provided a comment letter, so I think that addresses some of the comments from our department.
Okay. But I don't recall anything really major outstanding, or was there? Did I miss it?
We were looking for some plan revisions, but defer to the board if that's needed for this version or if it can be included in the final plan set.
Of the plan revisions on the building?
On the plans for the board to render its decision. So I mean, it is a 1914 law. It's granted certainly probably the most protection that you can have from a regulation standpoint. So defer to the board if they need that additional information to render a decision.
Is that, anything that would hold up us voting on that tonight?
We don't have a draft decision prepared, but in terms of the hearing, so if that additional information's needed to render a decision, we would need that. Otherwise, we can potentially include some of that in the plan set conditions.
We typically don't close the hearing until conservation's done anyhow. Are you on their agenda, Jim?
I believe my admin did set us up for that. I asked her to do that, so I will find out.
They're here. So watch what you say.
Then, okay, we're not there. Okay. Okay.
All right.
Have we passed that deadline? We must, yes, we are. Yeah, that's true.
Just as a point of information, when I was on Board of Select minute trying to encourage our town to buy this, because I thought we would need it for something.
Yeah.
And it does go back to 1914.
Yep.
And it has never been combined with another, in common ownership.
Yeah, no doubt.
So I don't think there's a lot of them like that in town. That was, that was one of them, so. Okay, any other questions right now from members of the board? Is there anybody in the public who'd like to be heard on this?
Are those going to be walkouts, by the way?
I don't believe so.
It's just the, looking at it, it looked like it might have a potential for a walkout basement, but the-
Yeah, maybe at least a corner.
But the rear elevation doesn't.
Okay. Nobody in the audience wants to be heard? Okay. All right, then.
Make a motion to continue this hearing?
Okay. Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? If you have none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
I'm moving to continue it till the, we have to continue it to a date.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, sorry, so we have to, must continue it to the October 3rd hearing?
Try to get your conservation filed by then.
Yes, definitely. Document.
Okay, so, we have motions, second. Allison Davis signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Voted. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is site plan approval for a proposed warehouse and distribution facility. This is a continued public hearing. Orlogis Inc. is the applicant. Location is 50 Centec Boulevard at 12 Centennial Drive. And the decision deadline is ninety days from close of the hearing. We have correspondence from the applicant that they are requesting a continuance.
We do.
Until October-
October 3rd.
October 3rd. Okay, so.
I'm recusing myself on this one.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to continue this public hearing until the October 3rd meeting.
Second.
Second. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, if you have none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Voted. Next order of business is a continued public hearing. Site plan approval for a proposed gas station. Lake 20 LLC is the applicant. The location is 193 Hartford Turnpike. Decision deadline is ninety days from the close of the hearing. And we have correspondence from that applicant that they would like to continue until October 3rd.
That is correct.
Okay.
I'm not voting on this one either.
I'll make a motion to continue this hearing until the October 3rd meeting.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second. Any further discussion? If you have none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Voted, so voted. Okay. Are you recording the votes right? This is site plan approval, so just going to make sure. Okay, so the next order of business is new public hearings for warrant article, zoning warrant articles that would go on the 2024 Fall Town Meeting. Do you want to just roll through these, or do you want to do each one?
Mr. Chair, if it's all right, I'd like to do them all as a lump sum for this evening.
Okay.
Do you want me to read the legal notice?
Oh, yeah.
Don't take my important job here. All right. In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, September 5th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Select Board Meeting Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Ave, Shrewsbury, Massachusetts, regarding proposed amendments to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw as follows. Article, "To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Shrewsbury, Section 6 Table 1, Use Regulation Scheduled to Add Brew Pub to the Restaurants Indoor and Outdoor Service and Restaurants Indoor Service Only Use Cases or to take any other action in relation thereto." Article, "To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Shrewsbury, Section 2, Definitions to amend the definition of frontage with regard to easements and amend Section 4, Continuance of Existing Uses, to add a new Section 4F to include protections from takings, rendering property non-conforming, or to take any other action in relation thereto." Article, "To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Shrewsbury, Section 2, Definitions, Section 3A, Establishment of Districts," sorry. "Section 3B, District Intent, Section 3C, to insert a new Section 710, to be entitled TOD Overlay District and to amend the zoning map of the town of Shrewsbury by adding the TOD Overlay District as shown on the exhibit plan as on file with the office of the town clerk in order to establish an overlay zoning district in regards to satisfying the requirements of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, 3A, AKA Multi-Family Zoning Requirement for MBTA Communities and contribute to the town's housing growth goals or to take any other action in relation thereto." Article, "To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Shrewsbury, Section 7R, Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Photovoltaic Installations and Battery Energy Storage Facilities to require battery energy storage of certain capacities to be located in accessory units and to reference applicable building and fire protection codes or to take any other action in relation thereto." Article, "To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Shrewsbury, Section 7U7, Accessory Dwelling Units, and Section 7C, Accessory Units, to move the accessory dwelling units provisions into the accessory uses section with amendments to align with the Affordable Homes Act, House Bill 4138, or to take any other action in relation thereto." The complete text, where applicable, may be seen during regular business hours in the office of the Planning and Economic Development Department of the office, or the office of the town clerk at the Municipal Office Building at 100 Maple Ave and the Shrewsbury Public Library at 609 Main Street.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. I wish zoning was a little less wordy, but I appreciate that introduction, so. I'm just going to pull up a brief presentation here. So again, as mentioned, we will not be talking about the MBTA TOD zoning. In addition, we'll be asking to withdraw that Section 7R, which is the battery energy storage towards accessory structures for small-scale battery storage. We'll be looking to have some additional review of that as a potential bylaw change prior to potentially bringing that back in a future town meeting. Starting with the accessory dwelling units, as many are likely aware, the Affordable Homes Act was recently passed. And as of February, accessory dwelling units will become mandated by right as an allowable use by right in residential zoning districts subject to regulations as defined in that Affordable Homes Act. Additional information and frequently asked questions are, as well as guidance documents, are being developed to be at the state level, to be provided to local communities in relation to this amendment or legislative act. We do currently have accessory dwelling units already existing in the bylaw, which is in relation to the town center district. So the proposal here is simply to take the existing accessory dwelling units, which is in the bylaw, and move that to townwide, thereby making that regulation consistent with the state regulations mandating that to be townwide by right. So this will just keep our existing bylaw in line with state statute. That will become effective in February. We may have additional, more in-depth review of how we look at accessory dwelling units, but this is the, kind of a, just a regulatory compliance step prior to that. Just talking a little bit briefly about some detail around that legislative mandate. The Act, again, allows accessory dwelling units as a right in residential zoning districts. Part of those that are delegated, the powers that are delegated to the local community to determine is if they cannot require, so cannot require owner occupancy of the principal dwelling or accessory dwelling unit. The ADU may be located within the principal dwelling unit or within a detached building on that same lot. We are able to prohibit short-term rentals, which is your Verbo and your Airbnb. That in our short term would be an addition in this, that we're going to recommend that we prohibit short-term rentals and include that language for accessory dwelling units only. An accessory dwelling unit in a detached building shall be located on the side rear yard and will conform to the setbacks of the district, so it's not granted additional bulk and lot provisions than existing. And the community can by special permit allow a second ADU on the property. At this time, we will be not, not be recommending adding that provision into our bylaw. We can evaluate if that's something that the community wants to pursue in the future. There we go. So just again, briefly going into some of our existing regulations. So again, we do have a definition of ADU on the books already. And so as part of that, we will be making some minor adjustments to the language in the definition section, again, just to fit with the legislative man, legislative language that has been promulgated, to be consistent with that. Our bylaw already is very much, you know, very similar to what was promulgated, so not much needs to change, other than a couple items. And then moving on. So the restaurant definition update. So we did recently approve at town meeting the brew pub definition, as a new definition in the town bylaw. We did allow that in the overlays. We are still finding that as we work with breweries and brew pubs that are looking to locate to Shrewsbury, that that is still somewhat restrictive in terms of available lots. What this is changing is just for the brew pub definition to essentially regulate them in the same zoning districts by including them in the restaurant, the existing restaurant definition. So it would be very much the same as any, anywhere a restaurant or indoor service only can be located, a brew pub can be located as well. Just as a quick refresher on that definition, brew pubs are primarily restaurants or can be similar to a restaurant in nature. They can brew beer onsite, but that shall not exceed twenty-five percent of the, of any off-site sales cannot exceed twenty-five percent of the establishment's production capacity. So it's primarily more a onsite consumption or restaurant-type use. And so it fits with that kind of use type. We'll also be in accordance with the AG's office recommendation, changing those references from brew pub to pub brewery, which is the same as the state licensing that they're required to. So very minor edit, but I just did want to call that out, that we'll be changing that reference. And I'll try to remember to call it pub brewery instead of brew pub, moving forward. And then easements and frontage, this is primarily, again, a kind of a small, detail-oriented amendment. The article proposes to update the definition of frontage with regard to easements and add a new provision to address and protect lots made non-conforming due to takings by eminent domain. So the language, this was a recommendation by town council to further protect the community and any residents from any legal complications that could arise from, from a takings-type situation. What this will do is render it so that if the town does take a taking, increasing right away or anything of that nature, it will not render a property non-conforming. And the language that's been provided is from town council. We see it in a number of other communities surrounding, as well as, it was tweaked slightly for the context of Shrewsbury, so. Happy to take any questions on any of those.
Questions from members of the board?
Again, this is my ignorance perhaps. What would be considered off-site consumption for the brew pub definition within the restaurant?
So that would be like delivery, so typically, like, if you think of a larger-scale brewery, which would not be included in this provision, but if they ship out to other, other bars or other establishments, or if they sell to like stores or liquor stores, that can only make up twenty-five percent of their overall annual production. So again, it's primarily brewing for people who are consuming at that location rather than any other off-site sales.
Thank you.
Just following up on what Perna said, I happened to go to the Cold Harbor on Otis Street a couple of months ago, and I was kind of impressed with the operation. And it looks like, I've read some of the legal ads, it looks like they're trying to expand the amount of parking because they're doing quite well. Do we know, it's a pretty big building, do we know to what extent they have off-site export of their product? Because I would hate to prohibit, you know, if we had an opportunity like a Cold Harbor, I would hate to scare them away because they were worried about the off-site export of product.
Yeah, so the, the, I'm not sure in relation to Cold Harbor specifically, but this language and that twenty-five percent is, it mirrors the state licensing language. So the state licensing would require them to do that if they're, if they're in a higher percentage of off-site production. They would not qualify at the state- percentage of off-site production, they would not qualify at the state level for that pub brewery license. So that would limit, we would still have to look at, from the prior, we did include some of the overlays that they could do by special permit, some of those other higher uses.
Intensity?
Yep.
We have one question on the easement. I must have missed it, but I thought we were gonna address the issue of utilities in the easement.
Correct, yeah, so, sorry, I may not have been as clear on that. So, so it's kind of a two-part amendment, so we're looking at the definition of frontage, which is where that utility easement language is. Currently, utility easements are, it's very restrictive in terms of, of what easements are included in that, taking away from frontage. And so we're looking to add some provisions in there for, whether it's a sewer easement or other utility easements that are not in relation to, they don't affect vehicular access to the lot. That was the primary intent of that, being included in that frontage definition, so.
So that's gonna be handled in the motion?
Correct, yep.
Okay. The accessory dwelling units. With the, with, but two things. If town meeting decides not to accept that, does state law supersede that?
Correct, so under, under home rule, essentially, anything that the state regulates, it supersedes any local regulations to that effect. So our local bylaw would be overridden in relation to ADUs, so it would just go straight to the building department. What this does is it provides a better framework within those definitions, consistent with our current regulations and ADUs. So it allows the building inspector to enforce our current ADU regulations.
Okay, so just, if we didn't vote to change that bylaw, and we kept it the way it is, we gotta be related, oh, you have to have a special permit and all that, what we have now, right? If we didn't change it, we left it that way.
No, that's the in-law bylaw, this is different than the one Chris.
It includes, I thought it included in-laws.
No, this is.
No, so we, so we have in-law apartments, I think what that is, we had some discussion. So in-law apartments, you know, they're presumably, under this ADU bylaw, if they meet those requirements, they may have been restricted as, as in-law apartments, but they may be granted rights under this legislative mandate to become accessory dwelling units. But they would have to check with the building inspector. And again, this, this allows us to apply those ADU bylaw regulations, so they would have to meet all of those criteria.
But as long as they met the criteria of this bylaw, I mean of the state law, then those could conceivably not be restricted as in-laws anymore.
Correct.
As long as they met the, all the criteria.
They would, they, so some in-law apartments under this legislative amendment in February may be entitled to rights as accessory dwelling units rather than an in-law, which restricts it to familial connection.
Okay.
Just, I don't mean to cut you off, but I suggest you would be, why don't we amend the, why don't we either eliminate the in-law bylaw, just get it off the books? And anybody who's got one, who's got one, because I'm concerned about those becoming three families as of right. Oh, you know, I got my in-law living here, that's a conformance, and now I got my garage, I got 800 square feet over my garage, I'm gonna do this one as of right, and how are you gonna stop him?
Right, so I agree, and I think that's something, as I mentioned, like I think in May, we'll wanna look at a deeper dive on how we amend and look at accessory dwelling units and the impacts. This is kind of the first step in that step. I will say, in terms of the three units, and this is, the building inspector is, you know, more versed on this, but I do know that there's, once, you know, they look at these as per unit, they don't really differentiate between, or as much between, like, single-family, two-family, accessory dwelling unit. And I know after three units, you start to hit some, some pretty intensive building code regulations, which, again, won't stop it, but it may preclude some.
I, I just think, you know, you could open up the floodgates of people saying, well, I got my in-law, and now I can get, and how are you gonna stop him from getting an accessory? So they'll have a three-family on that property, which is zoned, otherwise, single-family.
It, it is a concern that's been discussed and, and we're evaluating it. We don't have a change prepared for this.
Appeal the in-law bylaw, anybody who's grandfathered, grandfathered, so be it.
That actually makes more sense. For, for a lot of the town, a detached unit probably might not be workable, right? Because of the real setback? Is it, they're like 30, 40 feet, right?
Yeah, so, so I think one of the benefits that I think, for Shrewsbury, that we'll see probably less impact than other communities, is that we do have fairly restrictive setback requirements and fairly small minimum lot sizes. So most of our single-family neighborhoods, for the most part, are kind of built out in terms of massing that they would be able to. I won't say that that's completely the case everywhere, but I think we'll, we'll probably be a little bit able to weather potential impacts more than other communities that.
It would seem like more of the accessory dwelling units are gonna be attached. That's probably the only way a lot of people can do it, without going for variance, right?
Yeah, I mean, so this does allow for attached or detached, so people familiar with carriage houses, if you have some, some kind of a carriage house situation, that, that may be permissible under this.
But if you got a small lot, and you don't have, you don't have to build a freestanding unit, you're gonna be up against the house, you get a little more flexibility. There're gonna be a lot more than, probably more like what we see now, because of the, well, depends on what the lot is, but.
I got a small lot, and I got a detached garage, I can put one up on top of that, it's only on 864 square feet, and I measured it.
There you go. Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, I, it's, I don't think it's likely that this will be our last ADU amendment that'll come before the town. I think this is that first step to, to give the, the buildings inspector some additional tools. It is a bit of a moving target, as we're still waiting for those guidance documents to come out.
Just assume that, like it is now, if the town doesn't do anything, the state law is gonna be what guides it.
It's gonna preempt it.
Right. So, so the building inspector has to follow the state law?
Correct.
Prepare to just come into compliance now, and then deal with the minutia of what you're talking about at, say, a May town meeting, and give yourself some more time to allow for the state to come out with their regs. Makes sense.
Okay. Anything else, anybody else have anything?
I'm good.
I'm good. It's a public hearing, correct?
Correct.
It's a public hearing, is there anybody who'd like to be heard on any of these articles, except for the M E T zoning, because we're not doing that.
Or the battery.
And the batteries. So the restaurant, brew pub.
Couple of questions.
Greg Richard, 16 Hickory, just on the ADU questions, I guess, just a clarification. On the whole, if the state has regulations applying and you can't have a conflicting regulation, I guess I'm confused, like, I've kind of heard here, why would we pass anything, because it doesn't seem like it would hold if you have anything in conflict? Because, like, even on the two ADUs, if, if you have to do it by, you know, special permit, it has to be allowed, doesn't seem like we, we can prevent a conflict from whatever the state is saying, correct?
So if there's a conflicting bylaw, so, so if community, so if we did not make this change under that, anywhere where ours didn't conflict, so where, where it would conflict, so ours is only in the Town Center District, so someone else would come into the community and say, I'd like to do an accessory dwelling unit on my house, our local bylaw would say no, but if our building inspector said no, and enforced our local bylaw in conflict with the state bylaw, that opens us up to legal liability lawsuits.
So you're saying the building inspector couldn't say yes based off of how the zoning bylaw is written?
Correct, so, so any state regulation supersedes the local regulation, so she would be, you know, so the building inspector would have to enforce state law prior to enforcing the local law, so if it's allowed in the state.
That's why I'm confused, because, so if you didn't do anything, that's what I'm trying to walk through here, the building inspector, even though the zoning bylaw would say you couldn't do it, she would still have to say, yes, you can.
Correct.
So what's the?
I think the closest analogous situation is the hearing that we just had, the first hearing, which is Edgewater, where that lot was grandfathered by virtue of a general law, Chapter 48, Section 6, Little I, whatever it is, because it was a lot in existence prior to the town passing zoning regs, and it hadn't, wasn't owned in common ownership with, in a budding lot, so it merged. So in that instance, the zone, the building inspector may ask the owner of that lot, well, do a title search and show me, have a title search by a, you know, a real title examiner, not one that the owner prepares, but by a real title examiner, saying that we've examined a title to this lot and the abutting lots since, whatever, 1954, whenever we passed zoning, and it seems clear that this lot has not been held in common ownership and has more than 50, you know, and such that it might be entitled to the benefits of the grandfathered protection. So that was what Mr. Brown was in for. So that, in that instance, notwithstanding what our zoning bylaw says, there's nothing that prohibits him from building a single-family house on that lot, even though it doesn't meet the requisite frontage area. So that, that's the closest.
So the concern, but I guess I understand, but I'm understanding what the concern is to say that, why would we do it? So the concern is, are you concerned that we're gonna get, like, sued by the state because the building inspector rejects it, or what's the concern by not, if you did nothing, what's the concern, I guess?
There's nothing, they're just gonna go apply for a building permit.
Right.
And the building inspector has no authority but discretion but to issue it.
Right, but they wouldn't anyway, because you can't have a conflicting bylaw. If we change, if you, the modification of the bylaw, you can't do something more prohibitive than the state, is what I'm understanding, so how are we any different by doing anything?
Why would you wanna have something on the books that, you know, is in conflict with the state law?
Well, I don't know the, I'm just saying, but it didn't, in practice, I'm just trying to clarify, in practice, I don't think it makes a difference, is what you're saying, whether it's there or not, because fundamentally, they can't do something that's in conflict.
In practice, you're right, it doesn't, it's not necessary, but essentially, it's, this law was passed in July, and now we have to play catch-up to get up to, like, have our zoning bylaw be reflective of a new law that was just passed.
Okay, understand.
And, and so I think the biggest benefit for passing the zoning, again, is answering those, you know, provisions that they delegate to the local authority, those, what I'll call them the maze, you know, whether or not we allow a special, you know, special permit provision for a second bylaw, by, by taking that off the books, that for now, that's just not a question. We can, we can look at that in the future, but again, we're trying to look at just allowing what the state, to the minimum, is requiring us to, and not by omission, allowing additional provisions.
So the second ADU says it has, it can only be done as a special permit, there's no as-of-right second ADU in the state's guidelines? Is that what I'm understanding? That the only way to get a second ADU is by special permit across the state?
So again, it goes to the local regulations, what they say on it, and so by, by being more explicit, you're, you're given some more protection in terms of explicitly saying there shall be no, shall be no second.
They have no provision in there for.
Doesn't say a thing about a second ADU. The amendments don't, the.
It, it delegates it to that they can, but it, and similarly, it delegates to the local authorities, that, you know, if they wanna prohibit short-term rentals. So again, I think by answering those questions, you're given some additional protection.
We don't have to.
Don't have to, no.
Right.
But the, the other part of it is, like, the property that Mr. Brown has, that, and that lot was protected from dimensional requirements, but it, it, the law does not say that you can't require a special permit. This says you cannot require a special permit, so that's it.
But the reason Mr. Brown is, because the building, because town council said, oh, but we can regulate the use.
Yes, and the law was silent on that part of it.
Yeah, and there was some conflicting case law around that.
Yep. Anyway.
Okay. Is, and there's nothing, I don't know the, all the states, because you mentioned, I don't know if they're 100% out, but do they have anything about setbacks that they have specific, or does it always default to whatever the local town has on the books for that?
So, so it does require that an ADU in a detached building shall only be located in the side and rear yard and conform to the setbacks. Again, we wanna add in that provision, that, you know, if it's an attached, it's also.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know if they were saying the setbacks were less, or trying to make it more, or trying to allow more of these to be developed, I just wasn't sure. Is the easement specific to, say, like, potential Route 20 widening, is that what's driving that more? I know you said the town council, but would you in practice see that occurring probably with something around the Route 20 expansion, or modifications of Route 20?
If, if there's takings involved in the, the Route 20 expansion, again, that's kind of more at the state level, that, that runs those takings rather than local, but this would apply, do we say? I believe, yeah, this would apply that in, you know, any of those takings, that it would not render that lot non-conforming.
Reason is, because the town doesn't wanna pay the pro tanto, meaning that if you had a lot that was rendered non-conforming, you're gonna say, oh, because the town took it, my lot is non-conforming, my lot would otherwise be worth $250,000, pay me $250,000.
Makes sense. I know you weren't gonna talk about it, do you have one question about MBTA? Because I, it's a question, it's not about, it's not about the bylaw, I just wanted a question about if we had the feedback, because on the 5th of June was when we submitted for the, the pre-doctor review, I don't know if that had come back yet. That was all, I was, didn't know if that was back, because it's 90 days.
I don't know.
Yeah, we're not speaking on that tonight.
So is it no? We just, we can't get an answer if it was back or not?
It's not an open public hearing.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
Anyone else on any of these articles?
Do we need a motion to close the public hearing then?
We're gonna continue it, right?
Yeah, if we could continue the, the public hearings, other than the ones that were withdrawn.
Okay, I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on these warrant articles, but for the two that were withdrawn right now.
Gonna continue those to what, October 3rd?
Sorry, the October 3rd meeting.
Second.
Okay, a motion, second, any for discussion? Are you being unfounded, favor signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any votes are voted? Okay, next order of business is 7A, which is an update on the housing production plan. Mr. McGoldrick?
Thank you.
That's new business, that's not a hearing.
Correct. Thank you, so I'm gonna give a, a brief presentation covering what a housing production plan is and the importance to the community. I do know that a memo was provided to the, the board members, as well as the select board, covering a lot of the data that we've collected to date, so we'll be touching on some of those items. um, covering a lot of the data that we've collected to date, um, so we'll be touching on some of those items. We'll give a basic overview, uh, of the required sections of the housing production plan.
Chris, why don't we welcome the members of the Conservation Commission, cause we invited them.
Thank you, yes. Yeah, so the members of the Conservation Commission, if you wanna.
I don't think they have to identify, they don't have to speak, just, just welcome them, cause we invited them.
Thank you, yeah. Yeah, so we do have two members of the, the Conservation Commission here, uh, this evening, uh, to review this with us. Yeah, so we'll give a, a basic overview of the required sections of the housing production plan. Uh, a bulk of the presentation, uh, will be on the preliminary findings and data. Um, we are gonna cover a lot of data quickly, um, but, um, you know, we are looking for feedback from the board members, uh, this evening, um, just in terms of, uh, what we're presenting and the additional comments. Happy to go back to any of the slides and go into more detail if needed. So we did have a survey, a public survey, I do wanna mention, we did have a public survey that was available, for this, uh, housing production plan update. Um, we received two hundred and eighty-two responses to that survey, uh, which is significantly more than we typically do receive. So, um, I just wanna give a, a brief shout-out to the staff that, uh, developed that survey and ran that survey, uh, and a thank you to all of those that participated in that survey and gave us valuable information. Um, so, uh, the housing production plan is a locally mandated plan, uh, which, or sorry, locally maintained plan, uh, which is reviewed and approved by the state. Uh, it is a regulatory requirement, uh, for safe harbor provisions. Uh, this plan assesses our community's housing needs and sets a five-year vision for implementation goals and strategies uh, based on current local and regional data, as well as community input that we receive. The state guidelines require three specific sections, uh, for a housing production plan. The comprehensive housing needs assessment using local and regional data, identification of affordable housing goals, uh, and a set of implementation strategies to achieve those goals in a five-year timeframe. Uh, as an update to a previously approved plan, our comprehensive housing needs assessment, uh, is being updated to reflect, uh, the recent figures, uh, from the twenty twenty census update, uh, and our goals and strategies are being reviewed for their current status and updated to reflect the input that we receive. Uh, a current housing production plan guides local decision-makers in understanding housing conditions and needs. It's a key component to forty B safe harbor provisions, as mentioned earlier, and contributes to the housing section, uh, of our comprehensive master plan, uh, and it's a required piece of the housing choice community designation, uh, which is tied to a, a number of grant opportunities, uh, that the town typically pursues. It'll be no surprise to anyone, uh, that Shrewsbury has seen consistent growth over the past decade and is nearing forty thousand residents. Using a conservative one percent growth rate compounded annually, uh, our twenty thirty projection is estimated to grow to approximately forty-one thousand five hundred residents. Uh, actuals are anticipated to be slightly less, um, as we typically, um, fall just shy of that one percent, uh, growth rate over that decade span. Um, so how does that compare regionally? Compared to state and county figures, we've seen slightly above-average growth over the last decade. Uh, however, compared to many surrounding communities, we have grown at a, uh, more modest pace. Shrewsbury has seen more measured growth than Boylston, Grafton, Westboro, or Worcester, whose populations have grown much more significantly. Uh, we've also seen continued growth in the demographic identifying as Asian descent, now comprising a little over a quarter of the population. Now, we have also seen a significant growth in households, uh, in individuals aged sixty-five and older, and further declines, though moderate, in households with individuals under eighteen years. Uh, this is likely, uh, can be attributable, um, to increased multi-generational households and the over-fifty-five development, uh, policies which have been implemented and are, were, uh, important local policy points, um, from the last housing production plan update. Um, there's also the trend, uh, of new development that is less conducive to school-aged children. Diving a little deeper into our age cohort comparison, uh, we see Shrewsbury's bell curve uh, improving slightly in the twenty-year-old to forty-year-old, uh, age cohort ranges, uh, but we do see a new anomaly forming, uh, primarily, uh, in, uh, the, uh, sorry, the forty-to-fifty, uh, age range, uh, and, uh, more, uh, predominantly affecting the female, uh, age cohort, uh, category. Um, our previous plans do identify elderly women living alone and single mothers as financially vulnerable populations, uh, seen as growing in those previous, uh, updates. Um, so it's important to note, uh, that anomaly, that that demographic has now seen a significant decline. Um, we also, uh, and, and that indicates an area that the town, uh, will likely wanna study further as part of, um, future studies into housing. In somewhat later news, Shrewsbury remains one of the more affluent communities, uh, of the surrounding area. We've risen to third highest in the median household income, uh, sorry, remained third highest in the median household income and moving up to second highest in median family income. Uh, in general, our area, our area remains more affluent than state or county figures. When comparing, uh, sorry, where are we? Uh, when comparing, uh, growth trends to a historical development trends, we see declining, uh, development despite, uh, growing population. Uh, this chart shows significant development trends in Shrewsbury, notably the early subdivisions of the fifties and sixties, multifamily development in the seventies to nineties, coinciding with state establishment of chapter forty B, uh, and then, uh, primarily the tall, rather, single-family development, uh, in the two thousands. Looking deeper at existing units by type and comparing across surrounding communities, we see middle housing gaps in both Shrewsbury and Westboro that are not as prevalent, uh, in other communities, uh, at comparable unit counts. For this data set, it's important to note that single, attached, and duplex category would include row-house type development typical of condos. Uh, we also can see, can clearly see Shrewsbury's outlying single-family development, both a product of our greater population, uh, but also our smaller minimum lot sizes for single-family homes compared to other surrounding communities. Going just another step further into the number of rooms compared across communities, we see rental units in Shrewsbury being on the lower room count, uh, than other communities, uh, and owner-occupied units, uh, being on the higher room count comparatively. Although room type is not specified in this data, it likely suggests that the rental-style development, having lower bedroom counts, uh, is less conducive to families and single-family or condo developments, including attached or in-law apartments or other bonus rooms. Moving into affordability, although median gross rent as a percentage of household income is lower in Shrewsbury than state or county figures, there's a significant gap in contracting gross rent figures, although not inspect, unexpected that rental units see a higher proportion of occupancy, occupants at eighty percent or below the area median income, uh, which would qualify affordable hous, for affordable housing. Uh, when we see it in context of such high rents, it presents some obvious challenges. We see again that housing cost burn, burden, quantified as thirty percent or more of income going to housing costs, continues to disproportionately affect renters with a significant proportion paying thirty-five percent or more towards housing costs. Although not as drastic, householders are not exempt either, especially those with mortgages. And, uh, I want you just to remember back to those figures of the growing population and declining development, although it's not as simple as that, certainly a contributing factor. When we look at the housing cost burden figures as a percentage of a whole and compare those to severely cost-burdened, which is fifty percent or more, uh, of income going to housing cost burden, we see that cost burden doesn't just affect lower-income households. Uh, there is in fact a relative increase in severe cost burden at higher income levels as well as people stretch wallets to call Shrewsbury home. This cost-burden community above eighty percent AMI is an important demographic to note as they would not qualify for affordable housing programs or other housing opportunities anywhere in Worcester County. Uh, and so they're at a higher risk of being priced out of the region, not just the community. With that, um, I do have those key takeaway slides, I'd be happy to go back to those and kinda summarize some of that data. Um, I do intend to have, um, the, uh, draft housing production plan document, um, to members, um, on Friday tomorrow. Um, we're working really diligently, again, we've received two hundred and eighty-two responses and, uh, it is an eighty-page document, um, so that survey just recently closed and we do wanna incorporate that feedback into the document, it's, it's taking, uh, a little bit longer than we had expected. Um, I would also like to ask if the board members are, um, available, um, that we, uh, schedule a special meeting with Conservation Commission on the seventeenth, um, to potentially review this again and hold a vote, um, if they're okay with that, so.
Chris, can you just go back one slide?
Absolutely.
Thank you, I just didn't get to.
Yeah, so just kinda, we have it up, I'll kinda, kinda summarize. So we did see that Shrewsbury's subsidized housing inventory percentage, uh, dropped to six point one seven per seven percent. Previously it was six point three. Uh, we do have an additional one hundred and sixty-nine units that, uh, are eligible for addition to the SHI, um, which would bring Shrewsbury's percentage up to seven point three. Um, so that's the recent developments that have been approved, we're working on the request for new units, applications to submit those, so they would be, um, added to the subsidized housing inventory. Again, we talked about the severe housing cost burden, which is that fifty percent or more of income going to housing costs, tends to be among the lower income levels, uh, but also affecting the higher income levels. Um, and then the median contract rent, uh, as well as the median gross rents increasing, uh, and is more significant in Shrewsbury than in, uh, state or county figures. Likewise, median gross rent as a percentage of household income has actually decreased, um, more than Worcester or, uh, Mass, Worcester County or Massachusetts figures, uh, suggesting slowly declining levels of housing cost burden, um, and the rental properties attracting higher income earners.
Any questions?
No question.
No. This, are the numbers on the, the six point one seven, seven, um, point three, is that based on the latest, um, census?
Yeah, so the, um, so, correct, so the twenty twenty census, um, those figures were just recently, um, updated and promulgated to the communities. So those, those numbers, the six, the, the drop to a six point one seven percent is, um, because of the change in the census, that's how that affected our, our figures, it was previously six point three percent.
But if you're able to add those units in, we're gonna be up to seven point three, is that what that says?
Correct, yep.
Okay, so if we can get those in, that's a big jump, getting closer to ten.
Correct.
Okay.
Which is a safe harbor, right?
Correct, so safe harbor would, uh, so if we reach the ten percent, uh, we would be in safe harbor, uh, until the twenty thirty census figures would presumably then drop our number.
Right, and just for people at home who watch, safe harbor in that instance means you can refuse forty B projects. Until you hit the ten percent camp.
Correct. Put slightly a different way, it means the, um, that the, uh, the Housing Appeals Committee would uphold a decision to deny, um,
Right.
a forty B.
Right, but right now, you can't.
Right, I, I just make that distinction because it doesn't preclude the community from pursuing forty Bs if they're beneficial.
If they wanted to.
Right, and, and again, when you look forward to that twenty thirty census update, you know, you may, a town may wanna take a slightly more proactive approach.
Chris, not good with fast math, or math in general, um, but to get from that seven point three to the ten, how, do we have a, a sense of how many units that could potentially, that would potentially look like?
I, I have a spreadsheet that has that number, uh, I, I do not have that number memorized as of, uh, as of tonight, um, but I, I do, I, we know that number and I can, I can get that.
Just be interested to see what that is, just for comparison as we, you know, in the event that larger housing developments come before us, we can do that kind of comparison through the web.
Can you, like, or is it too complicated, like, quickly explain how when we're in the situation we're in, under the ten percent, when somebody comes in with a forty B project in a certain number of houses, uh, a certain number of apartments, that different sizes, um, reflect longer safe harbor periods?
Correct, so, um, so a development that produces, um, ninety-two units would provide, uh, the community, sorry, ninety-two SHI, SHI-eligible units, uh, would give the community a two-year safe harbor. Um, under that, I believe it was seventy-four is the other threshold, um, that would provide the community with a one-year safe harbor. Um, so depending upon the number of affordable units, um, that are generated, um, by a project, it does affect how long that safe harbor lasts as a production, uh, criteria.
So if you know how to, how to work it, I, I don't mean like manipulate the system, but if, if forty B developers wanna come in and you can strategically work with one that you'd rather have than the other, you can get a two-year period where you've got time to absorb that population into the town population.
Yeah, so a, a strategy that some communities do pursue is looking at, um, approving forty Bs to, um, achieve a one- or two-year, especially a, a friendly forty B that achieves a one- or two-year safe harbor, um, to preclude unfriendly forty Bs during that time period as you near that ten percent.
And not doing a lip with a forty B developer, does not mean the forty B developer cannot develop your property, right?
Correct, that would be an unfriendly forty B, the, the, um, essentially the developer goes to the state with a project eligibility letter, um, and then other than the, uh, forty B regulations, as long as they meet each of those criteria, the community cannot deny it. They can attach some conditions, but, um, they cannot deny it.
Right, okay, thank you.
Just, just a quick follow-up on that, um, for example, if, if a developer comes and you approve certain number of forty B units and you get that two-year safe harbor, during that period, you still can't prevent other developers from coming to town with forty B projects, even though you are within that forty B, sorry, um, safe harbor period. But if the town should deny that, the appeals board may look at it, right?
Right, and, and, and that kinda goes back to that strategy where typically if you have a two-year safe harbor, that two years isn't spent, you know, under that strategy, you wouldn't spend that two years just not doing anything you would pursue, looking at, um, or as of, as developers approach the community, looking at that, um, you would, uh, then look at potentially, prior to that two-year period, looking to get a, a, a friendly forty B, um, that's negotiated through a lip or otherwise, um, to then achieve another two-year or one-year, uh, safe harbor.
You have a little more latitude on how much you wanna work with another, with a, with a develop. So, it, you get a little bit of control in our destiny, our own destiny, um, at least making it more digestible than have a thousand units come in at the same time.
You get more bang for the buck on the rental units than you do the homeownership units.
Right.
Does all the rental units count, even the non-affordable ones? Where the homeownership ones, the, only the affordable ones count?
And that's what's happening on Green and South Street.
Yep.
Okay, go on, online, but I don't think anybody really wants to.
Do we have to provide con-con and opportunity to ask questions?
No, this isn't a public, this is a public hearing, this, he's just making a presentation.
But we have to schedule, you want us to vote to schedule a public hearing?
Yep.
Um, so.
No, to.
It's not a public hearing, but he was invited.
Right, I'm sorry, Mr. Toledo?
Can we come up?
Sure.
My name's Ken Toledo, I'm chairman of the Conservation Commission, joined with Chris Delala, he's a Conservation, um, member. Thank you for inviting us. He's a conservation member, thank you for inviting us. Aleah Cosso is here, she's the conservation agent. The only thing I would ask from a conservation viewpoint is that you add into the Housing Production Plan the Conservation Bylaw that was just passed recently. This gives us a little bit more, controls the 100-foot buffer just a little bit more. There's a 15-foot no disturb and a 30-foot no build. We've worked tirelessly trying to get this Conservation Bylaw in, and it's helped tremendously. Couple of these other projects that have come before us, they were able, even though we had the bylaw, they were able to build right up to the wetlands boundary. We asked them if they could pull some things back, they did just a little, but they still encroached all the way up to the, right to the limit, so. That's my comment.
Echo the same comment.
So, that's always, that's kind of what we have to say.
Thank you, yeah, we'll certainly include that, you know, in reference to that in the updated Housing Production Plan, and again, I think that's the, what we're looking for on the 17th. Again, I'll try to have that draft finalized into both the CONCOM members and for Planning Board, and then at the 17th meeting, hopefully that'll be enough time to kind of go through that information. I do appreciate you coming, that's why I wanted to give that kind of brief update. I know it's a lot of information all at once, so I wanted to try and have that conversation early with the boards, because we'll be looking for approval of that plan on the 17th.
Does this require the same notice as any other public hearing for the Housing Production Plan?
No, so it just requires a public meeting, so it would just be a public meeting.
You could just post it and...
Correct, yep.
So, are you asking us to vote to have, to have the extra meeting on the 17th?
Correct, yep.
We have a public meeting to discuss the Housing Production Plan on, was it Tuesday, September 17th? It's 7:00 PM, in conjunction with the Conservation Commission's hearing that night as well.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Let's see you on the 17th. The next order of business is more or less a housekeeping issue. It's a vote to correct a decision of the Planning Board regarding 440 Hartford Turnpike. Some of these things were just dates that were referenced incorrectly, and minor things like that, right?
Correct.
Not changing, not changing the substance of the, of the decision.
Correct, yeah, the changes that are being proposed are clerical in nature, and none of them are substantive to the decision itself.
I'm recusing myself, but I'm not going to get up.
All right, make a motion.
That was a special permit, right?
Let me just double check.
I don't think it was site plan approval.
Site plan approval.
It was any site plan approval?
Correct.
Okay. Tried to catch you an opportunity to vote.
It's okay.
Okay, so then, could I have a motion to correct the decision of the Planning Board regarding 440 Hartford Turnpike, as outlined in the memo from Mr. McGoldren?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second, any further discussion? If any, none, or in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, old business, we don't have any old business, do we?
No.
Okay, then we're just down to correspondence. We have a memo dated August 2024 from Trish Settles, Dominique de Trembo, and Matt France, CMRPC, regarding local planning assistance, your office has already seen all that, right?
Correct, yep.
Thank you. Next item is a letter dated August 23rd, 2024, from Carmine Thomas, attorney for DeMoo's supermarkets, regarding the Planning Board application for the gas station development at 193 Hartford Turnpike. We'll just incorporate that into the hearing, but... Next item is a memo dated August 2nd, 2024, from Kristen Mubowrak, Director of Planning and Economic Development, regarding 34 Harrington Ave, site visit report. Do you just want to briefly summarize that?
Sure, so, so this memo just outlines, we were requested to have a site visit by the applicant for the 34 Harrington Ave project. The applicant there was looking for a full occupancy permit, they're currently operating under a temporary occupancy permit. We did review a number of outstanding items that'll need to be addressed prior to a full occupancy permit being issued by our recommendation. So, that memo just details our findings from that site visit. A number of those items, I do anticipate, may require additional board action, but this, at this time, is included as an FYI to the board of essentially what's still remaining on that site.
Does the temporary occupancy permit, is it restricted to how many?
Sorry?
Is it restricted to how many units they can rent out?
The temporary occupancy, we did not restrict the number of units that could be rented out, so it can be fully occupied.
Do we know how many are occupied today?
I don't have that figure before me, no.
There's probably four to six cars there, like, late at night and in the morning, so it could be somewhere around that area.
Looks okay.
Right, so, I mean, primarily, the site is complete and to plan, again, the, the, the site, site visit report does detail a number of items, they're nature, they're minor in nature, and that's, we were asked for that temporary occupancy permit, and our office said that we didn't have an issue given the outstanding items at that time. But again, we do want to see that those items are addressed prior to that full occupancy, so... Because once that occupancy permit is issued, that's the, the last remaining leverage that you have.
Right, and we don't have much of a bond on those site things, so we don't have much of a stick to incentivize them.
On the plus side, it does look better than what was it before?
Yes, it does.
Never thought that was going to happen, though. How many years was that like that? Okay, anything else on that, are you all set?
Lots of it.
Okay, and last item on the agenda is memo dated August 12th, from Louise O'Neill, Assistant Planner, regarding the accessory dwelling units. We already covered that, but with just some background, so...
Right, so, yeah, obviously, as part of the, that legislative mandate, our staff member, Louise O'Neill, who's the Assistant Planner, we had tasked her with tracking that update, and once that was passed, she prepared that memo and recommendations for moving forward, so.
Steve Bedus's firm actually did a, did a memo on it and circulated it, it was actually pretty good.
Yep, and that as well, right.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Anything else come forth before the open session, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we conclude this evening's hearings, meetings.
Second.
Yep, move to second, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Close, so voted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, did it say 2020, when was the last time?